Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for taking part in this important discussion today as we learn more about the candidates who seek to represent us in Salem Kaiser School Board as well as the City Council in Ward 6. Last month, you may recall, I shared some disappointing information about the loss of one of our friends in the Chamber community. And unfortunately, this morning, I need to share an additional loss. Our organization and the many great friends in Salem, Carolyn Gorsuch lost her battle with cancer a few weeks ago, surrounded by her friends and family. Past President Gorsuch is part of a unique duo. Her husband, Chris, and Carolyn are the only husband-wife combination to serve as presidents of our organization. And I just wish that you keep Chris and their son in your prayers as we move forward. It is now my distinct honor to introduce our Salem Chamber President, Mr. Mike Heron.
Thank you, Tom. Looks like everybody's in a pretty good mood today, and I think I know why, because I spent some time out in it over the weekend. I want to welcome you all to the Salem Chamber Forum Lunch Series brought to us by our season-long sponsors, Haggen Hamilton Insurance Solutions, and today's title sponsor, or today's monthly sponsor, Ameritidal. I also want to give a special welcome. I know at these candidate forums, we get a lot of first-time attendees to these forum lunches, so I want to give a special welcome to any first-time attendees and any new members to the Chamber. This is always sort of a highlight forum. You know, for many of us, it's our first or maybe only opportunity to see all the candidates that will be on the ballot in one spot. So I really look forward to what we hear from them today. But before we hear from our sponsors and get to the programming, I want to begin with a moment of prayer and reflection, followed by the presentation of our National Anthem performed today by Ellen Yin. So if you would please stand with me. "We take this moment to pray and reflect on our lives in this moment. We are thankful for the meal before us, for the hands that prepared it, and for those who serve it. We are grateful for this day, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we lend each other strength and guidance as fellow leaders within the Salem community. May we be driven to always give our best and courageous to rise to the challenges we face. Amen." Ellen.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow, thank you, Ellen. You can catch more of that wonderful voice on her podcast, Cubicle to CEO. And Ellen is also on our McLaren Leadership Foundation Board, just doing a lot of really great things in and around Salem and well beyond. So today, as you can see, we have quite the table. I feel a little bit like I'm in one of those live reenactments of Da Vinci's The Last Supper. But I want to jump right into introductions. I don't think I have these in order as we go across, but I want to just kind of give you highlights of who's here at the head table. We've got Chris McLaren, Agent at Haggen Hamilton Insurance Solutions; Brad Moore, Business Development Manager at Ameritidal; Logan Lor, City Council Candidate, Ward 6; Deanna Garcia, City Council Candidate, Ward 6; Lisa Harnish, the incumbent for Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 1; Anthony Mitchell, Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 1 Candidate; Angelo Aradondo Baca, Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 3 Candidate; Jennifer Parker, Salem Kaiser Zone 3 Candidate; Karina Guzman Ortiz, the incumbent for Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 5; Jason Croker, Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 5 Candidate; Mel Fuller, Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 7 Candidate; and Jeremiah Radka, Salem Kaiser School District, Zone 7 Candidate. Please join me in welcoming our head table. There's also a number of local officials in attendance today that I want to recognize. We have Salem Mayor Julie Hoy, City Councilor Shane Matthews, Marion County Commissioner Kevin Cameron, Kaiser City Councilor Sarita Cross, Salem Kaiser School Board members, Dr. Cynthia Richardson, Dr. Sacha Shondagiri, Karina Guzman Ortiz, introduced earlier, and Lisa Harnish, also introduced earlier, as well as former Salem Mayor Anna Peterson. Please join me in welcoming them today. Okay, in order to preserve the maximum amount of time for our candidates to speak today, I'm going to ask that our past presidents and current Salem Chamber Board members raise their hands so people can see who you are. We will recognize you with a round of applause. Thank you for your attendance. Okay, for the second season in a row, our partners at Haggen Hamilton Insurance Solutions serve as our Forum Speaker Series presenting sponsor for the year. I direct your eyes to the screens behind me for a brief profile of their company.
When I looked at the Forum Speaker Series, we have never had a title sponsor, a presenting sponsor for the series. But if you look at all of our other events, we have title sponsors or presenting sponsors. So I thought it was a very natural extension that we'd invite a company in and really showcase them throughout the year, knowing that they're backing up that event and helping us with the financial stability, but also getting the messaging out to attract more people into the room. Haggen Hamilton was a national partner, and they were ready to see what type of innovation we could do. It's a distinct honor to be the Forum Speaker Series sponsor. The Chamber does an amazing job advocating for businesses here and bringing content that's relevant to every business owner in the city. We absolutely are invested in this community and want this community to prosper and want every business owner to prosper. And aligning ourselves with the Chamber is aligning ourselves with one of the best organizations in the entire country advocating for the rights of businesses to be here, to live, work, and play here, and make this community the best it can be.
Thank you again to the John family for your continued support and to the Haggen Hamilton team members with us here today. It is now my pleasure to introduce Brad Moore, Business Development Manager at Ameritidal. Salem's Ameritidal team blends industry experience, community involvement, and a commitment to customer satisfaction, all to ensure customers receive expert guidance and support. Ladies and gentlemen, to share more about today's sponsor, Ameritidal, welcome to the podium, Mr. Brad Moore.
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Tom, and Chamber staff for having us here tonight. And I am limited to two minutes. I did receive an email from Tom at 3:06 a.m. this morning saying, "Brad, be accurate with your time, two minutes." So I'm going to do my best. Ameritidal has been a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and we had to look some of these up, but for 42 years. And in addition to our sponsorship and attending events, I'm pretty proud to say that our Senior Vice President, Mr. Eric Templeton, is on the board of the Chamber, and also a former Senior Vice President, Mike D. Rocher. Some of you still may remember him. He's still around, but yeah. Awards, Mike was honored in 2007 with Salem's First Citizens Award, and in 2013, my wife, Jeanette, was a Distinguished Service Award. But at Ameritidal, we're not only passionate about title and escrow, we're excited about our community. In addition to closing escrows, associates give back to our community in a lot of different ways: board membership, volunteerism, and fundraiser to a lot of different organizations. I'll cut out the organizations. That'll help with the two minutes, Tom. And our favorite way to give back is by throwing some fundraisers, which we do quite a few. We think they're the best fundraisers. And one of them is Ameritidal's Big Labachi Charity Bocce Ball Tournament. We've been doing that for 13 years, and we've raised over, oh, what was it? I think it's $185,000 for local community. And the last two years, we've been using Eventbrite, and it's kind of fun, we sit with a big TV and watch the graphs fill up. But we've sold out in 27 minutes the last two years. Hashtag, beat that, Taylor Swift. Another one that we do is Ameritidal Idol, which is coming up. I think that there's some flyers on your table. It's a fundraiser, it's live band karaoke, and we raise money for some more nonprofits. With that, we've done a little over $160,000. And this year, we're benefiting Darian's Gift and Salem's Angels. So we're proud of our community, proud of the Salem Chamber. They do a lot of good work. And if you're purchasing, selling, refinancing, please choose Ameritidal, because yes, it matters where you close. Ameritidal Idol.
Brad, my time suggestions come from a long history of when I don't suggest time, I get our President, Mike Heron, reminding me why I should always tell. It is wonderful to serve in this role today, but I will admit, this is a complicated role. I want to thank, first of all, Brad, Eric, Erica, Sam, and Chad, certainly the most skilled bocce ball team anywhere in the title business. We appreciate your years of support. On May 20th, residents in Salem Kaiser will share their voice at the ballot box. Today, we host candidates seeking to represent us in two important elected offices, that of Salem City Councilor for Ward 6 and our Salem Kaiser School Board candidates in Zones 1, 3, 5, and 7. Each of these individuals is to be applauded for their willingness to serve, and I do mean that. The Salem business community recognizes your commitment to public service and your willingness to raise your hand. Not many people are willing to do that. Thank you all for being willing to do so. Helping me today are Chamber staff team members, Jameis and Gideon and Lane Noe, who are manning the timing clock and timing signs. They have reviewed these with our candidates. We are a pretty simple organization. Yellow means caution. We're halfway through, 30 seconds to go. Red means stop. And I'll talk about what that means here in a moment, if you're the guy like me, sitting in the middle. We will start with our candidates seeking office for Zones 1, 3, 5, and 7 on Salem Kaiser School District. Each candidate will have one minute to share an introduction of themselves and their campaign. Equally, each candidate will have a 30-second close with final remarks following our Q&amp;A period. After hearing from our school district candidates, we'll transition into the duties of moderating our City Council candidates for Ward 6. One of the challenging duties in serving as moderator, Les will find out again tomorrow night, is the necessity to ensure fairness. I will ask a professional pardon, should I, a mere Chamber exec, need to cut you, a possible elected official, off. My apologies in advance, but I appreciate your understanding. Now let's jump right in. On January 29th, the National Center for Educational Statistics released results of the 2024 National Assessment of Education and Progress, a biennial set of math and reading exams administered to students in grades 4 and 8. What was Oregon's ranking? Fourth grade scores ranked 48th nationally in math and 46th in reading, despite an 80% increase in state spending on K-12 education over the last 10 years. Eighth grade scores ranked 38th in math and 31st in reading. Oregon has prioritized increasing spending, salaries, and staff, but has not tracked the outcomes of such decisions. Spending has far outpaced inflation. Today, we host eight individuals seeking to serve as Salem Kaiser School Board members, individuals who will craft the future of education for Salem Kaiser in the years to come. Representing Zone 1 is incumbent Lisa Harnish. Director Harnish, your one minute starts now.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here. My name is Lisa Harnish, and I am the incumbent in Zone 1. I am first and foremost a mom. I have two adult children who went all the way through from first grade to 12th grade, graduating from West Salem schools, and it was an honor and a pleasure to be as a part of this district. I've also served in a lot of volunteer roles. I was on the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation for many, many years and chaired the Awesome 3000 for about 13 years, looking right at you, Kathy, and also have been a part of the Budget Committee and also the Bond Campaign. I am here today because our children deserve the absolute best in terms of academic excellence, where every child can thrive. I'm focusing in, continue to focus in, on literacy, safe and welcoming schools, and also academic excellence.
Thank you, Director Harnish. Zone 1 Candidate, Mitchell, your one-minute introduction begins now.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Anthony Mitchell, and I live in West Salem. I'm hoping to be elected to Zone 1. I have three young children, and they all go to a district, excuse me, a school in our district. I want our schools to be better. As you heard, we have some alarming statistics and some alarming data around outcomes within our district and across our state. I work in the private sector. I work for a software company, and I am highly analytical by nature, so I'm always interested in data. And I'm also interested in making decisions from a leadership perspective and from a management perspective that will improve the outcomes of that data. I feel that it is time for some changes to be made at the district level in terms of what we are doing as a board to hold individuals accountable for what is happening in our schools. And every parent that I talk to, including my wife, agrees with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Mitchell. Candidate Aradondo Baca, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Angelo Aradondo Baca. This is a personal journey for me. I attended all K-12 schools in the zone that I'm not wanting to represent. I credit the district for shaping me who I am. I learned everything from how to do my taxes to how I speak English, as it is my second language. I not only have this experience as being a recent graduate of our school district, but I also am the guardian of two of my sisters, one who is currently at Western Oregon University and one who is a junior at South Salem High School, where I graduated. I have done everything from, you know, helping with homework to attending parent-teacher conferences. I think we can all agree on one thing, that parenting is really hard. But I really kind of value this journey for helping me understand that. Because of these experiences, I'm running for school board. I am running to make sure that every student, because they all deserve extensive belonging. I'm running because I want all students to be successful in our district, and I want them to be successful after they go out and do post-secondary education things. And I'm running out of time, so I will respect you.
Thank you. Zone 3 Candidate, Parker, your one minute begins now.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Parker. I'm running for Salem Kaiser School Board, Zone 3. I'm Employment Service Manager, and I work with individuals with disabilities. I graduated from Western Oregon University with a bachelor's degree in psychology, and I'm a single mom with an adult son who also has disabilities. I am running because I believe we can do better in our schools. I'd like to expand more career and technical education. I would like to focus on more improvement on reading scores and math scores. I'd like to especially work with the vulnerable population and improve the safety of the schools enforcing clear and consistent discipline policies. Thank you, and I hope to. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Zone 5 incumbent Director Guzman Ortiz, your minute begins now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Karina Guzman Ortiz, and my pronouns are she/her/they. I am running for a second term in the Salem Kaiser School Board out in Zone 5. I am, in addition to being a mother of two students in our district as well, I have seen our schools from the inside and out. Prior to my role on the school board, I was a substitute guest teacher in our schools and had the opportunity to work with kindergartners, middle schoolers, and high schoolers. With my own children, I know that the impacts of COVID are very real and very persistent, and I hear that from my friends and family who are educators, from school counselors to teachers and administrators in our school district. I'm running again because I care deeply about our schools, I care about our students, I care about our families and our educators, and I know that we are all an interconnected community that deserves quality schools for our students so that we have those students graduating into our community and being leaders with us. I will continue to support improvements in policy and ensuring that our budget is spent accordingly so that we can improve the quality of our education and make sure that our students and educators both feel welcome and safe in our schools.
Thank you, Director. I believe in transparency. I want this audience to understand, we did not understand that Candidate Croker would not be here, and if he arrives late, we will assimilate him into the program where we stand in the program. For now, we will jump over to Zone 7 and start with a one-minute introduction from Candidate Fuller.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mel Fuller. I'm here running for Zone 7. I've got two children in the school systems, one in 5th grade, one in 7th. They're both Title 1 schools. I spend about three days, sometimes four, a week, inside the schools volunteering, and I tell you, these test scores are concerning, no doubt about that. But what I see in the schools when I'm in the classroom working with the kids is kids who can read, kids who are just confused by these testings. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do them, but I think there's a lot more good going on in our schools than people see, and getting inside and seeing that is just life-changing for me. I'm a small town from the coast. I moved here after college. I went to Oregon State, got a bachelor's in history, and I want to see our schools continue doing what they're doing, which is standing up against the administration and making our schools inclusive and a learning environment for all. Thank you.
Zone 7 Candidate, Radka, your one minute begins now, sir.
Thank you for inviting me here today. My name's Jeremiah Radka. I'm a father of three children and a small business owner. I'm deeply concerned about where our district is headed. I believe it is time for some real-world accountability and focus. As a parent, I want every child to graduate ready for life. It is one thing to be handed a diploma, yet another to be equipped with the skills and confidence to succeed. With less than 30% of 3rd graders in our district able to read at grade level, the method of passing students along needs to stop. Classrooms are unsafe and filled with disruptions. Classrooms lack professionalism and clear expectations for learning. Every student needs practical, hands-on learning that connects to the real world. We cannot have more of the same if we are ever going to make progress. We need to empower and hold accountable our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your introductory statements. Now we will transition to the Q&amp;A period. Each candidate will have one minute again to answer the question posed to them. This question is the same for all eight candidates. The first question is, what are the top needs within Salem Kaiser School District, and how do you plan to address these needs if you are elected to the school board? Candidate Parker, you are up first.
The top needs are in the school district right now, or the biggest one right now would be safety. Our teachers are having such a battle right now with, they're being hurt, the students are being bullied. There's not clear, consistent discipline policies currently right now. Also, like I mentioned before, our math and reading scores are behind. We need to improve our scores. And also, working with support for special education students and for elementary schools for back in 3rd grade to get started when they're young. And mental health, that's the biggest issue right now, is mental health support, and we need to help and support all students and have them succeed and graduate at whatever path that they choose, student, safety, academic success, and special education mental.
Thank you, Candidate Parker. Candidate Aradondo Baca, you are on the clock.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, some of the issues that I want to highlight is early literacy. Obviously, if we don't have, you know, our kids reading at the level they're supposed to early on, everything else in school just builds up from there. So we need to fix our literacy. I also believe that we really need to focus on making sure our students' basic needs are being met. That really goes, it's a very complex issue, because if their basic needs, if they're hungry, if they have adequate, you know, clothing, if they need other help, that are reasons, those are reasons why they are absent, you know, from school, why they're not focusing on their classes effectively. So we need to focus on those. And then third is, as I mentioned, making sure that our students are ready to go out in the real world, whether that is, you know, going to a trade school, wanting to become an electrician, wanting to start a small business, or wanting to go into higher ed to be a doctor or the other career paths. We need to make sure that our students are having those skills needed to be ready for the workforce.
Thank you. Director Guzman Ortiz, your one minute begins now.
As I think about the needs of our students, there are many, and I mentioned COVID, and including there is that early literacy that we just heard. Our students need to learn to read, and then they can read to learn, and that's something that's really important for us to understand. Also, when we think about safety, it's beyond the physical safety. It includes physical safety, but it's our social, emotional, and behavioral health and safety that is also very important. I'm a social worker by training, and I understand that our students are impacted by how they are treated at home as well as by how they are treated at school. And so when I think about the solutions for us, it includes making sure that our budget, we know that our budget has been tight. I led our district through those significant budget cuts, that we protect that budget, that we protect our instructional corps, making sure we are protecting the teachers and the classrooms that our students are in, because that is where and why they go to school. And in addition to that, that we are providing the adequate resources and supports to our educators so that they can do their job well, so that they feel welcome, and that they also feel safe in our schools, and therefore can transfer that care and connection into our students so that they can also learn and graduate with success.
Thank you. Candidate Croker, you are on the clock for one minute, sir.
Thank you very much, and I must apologize. I was upstairs. I thought this was going on upstairs while I'm late. Anyways, yes, safety is one of the biggest things that I want to run on. I want to have a serious discussion about getting SROs back in the schools. There's been some real issues with a 320% increase in violent crimes in the schools over the last four years. I think that makes it pretty obvious that we need to get SROs back in the schools, or at least have a serious discussion about it. Just having metal detectors in the schools is not sufficient for replacing an officer in the schools. So safety is one of them. Of course, we need to talk about funding, and that's a whole, it's a whole nother topic that's hard to get into in just a one minute, but there's a lot of things that could be improved upon as far as funding and deciding where the money goes. And I also want to make sure that we get fiscal education into the schools. The kids need to know about, you know, if they're graduating and don't even know what an interest rate means, you know, it's, okay, I can see I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd like to personally apologize to you if we were not clear on the direction, so please accept that apology from me personally. Zone 7 and Candidate Radka, your one minute begins now.
To me, as a parent, I believe that we need to empower the parents to be more effectual for the school. I'm not only running for the school board, but as a parent, I want to represent the parents who are out there representing their kids. This is not about me, it is about our education and whether or not it's going to be effective for the future careers. Oregon has one of the best industrial complexes, whether that be the Silicon Forest or our fields that grow food, grass, things like that. They need students that can actually do those jobs, and if we're not doing it, if the teachers are not able to teach those, that level of material, then we need to make some changes. So I'm here to help you guys and listen to you guys. Let's make some changes.
Thank you. Candidate Fuller, your one minute begins now.
Thank you very much. One minute is not a lot of time.
One minute is not a lot of time, and so I'm going to focus really, I'm going to piggyback on what some of my other candidates have said. Teachers and students are in schools for seven-plus hours a day. That's a really long time, and when you're there, you deserve to feel safe. You deserve to feel like people want you there, and you deserve a place where you feel you can go report a problem if you see one. When I hear things like getting police officers back in schools, clear and consistent discipline, that does not sound like an environment where I want to be for seven-plus hours a day trying to learn. So I'm running for school board because I see so many confident, great things happening in our schools. I want to celebrate that. I want to see it keep going. Thank you.
We will now move over to Zone One. Candidate Mitchell, you will start us off. Your one minute begins now, sir.
We have a lot going on in our schools that's positive, and I think we have some things that are negative that need to be addressed. In terms of some of those things specifically that I want to address, it has become clear to me as I have looked over some of the information that's publicly available, as was mentioned at the beginning by Tom, we don't necessarily accurately track student outcomes in our district or across the state. I am not convinced that we have a clear picture of student outcomes at a high level. I think that we have some data that's helpful. I think we have a lot of data that is unhelpful. One of the things I care about is accuracy about understanding where our students and their families truly are at. Another thing that I care very deeply about is our teachers. It is a difficult job. I care very deeply that our students love working with their teachers and that our teachers love working with their students, and that our students, most importantly, are being prepared with adequate skills to be able to be productive and competent workers and contributors in society. Thank you.
And finally, School, Zone One Director Harnish, the floor is yours.
Yes, I, like my colleagues, academic excellence is something that we really have to focus in on. The scores that you heard today are not where we want to be, need to be. I believe too that it doesn't fully represent what is happening in our schools. Early literacy has to happen, and it needs to happen well so that our students have the supports that they need. Students have to also feel welcome. They need to feel like they belong. That sense of belonging helps students show up. Our attendance scores since the pandemic have plummeted. They're on their way back, but we need to work really hard within our school buildings to make sure that students feel welcome and secure in their coming to school. We also need to really focus in on helping to support our teachers so that they can be the best that they can be, providing curriculum that is one that will be supportive of what they are teaching in the classroom.
Our second inquiry dives into accountability. The question is, how may Salem Kaiser School Board best provide better results regarding student achievement and school performance, and what needs to be done to make these vital Candidate Croker, you will begin, and your one minute starts as soon as you receive the microphone. Thank you.
Can you repeat that question, please?
How can the Salem Kaiser School Board provide better results regarding student achievement and school performance, and what needs to be done to make these vital improvements?
First off, I think we need to be really looking at what we're allowing to be a passing grade. I know there's a lot of schools, I've talked to some different folks, that 40% is a passing grade, and that's not acceptable. If we're saying it's all right to be at a 40% level, what are we setting these kids up for? You know, when we're sending them out into the real world and saying, okay, 40% is all right, that's, it's not all right. We're setting these kids up for failure doing that. So I think we need to, we need to be holding our kids to a higher standard, and we need to hold everybody to the same higher standard. I apologize, I'm not getting a whole lot of time to think about the question here. But, yeah, we need to be holding our kids to a higher standard, and I apologize, I didn't get the second part of that question written down. What was that again? No, I'm out of time anyways. All right, thank you.
And point of clarity to the audience, we do not give our candidates these questions beforehand, and that is an important part of what our organization stands for, is their ability to answer in real time like each of you. Director Guzman Ortiz, your one minute begins now.
Thank you. You spoke about accountability there in the introduction, and I think that is an important and strong word, and when I think about accountability in terms of our student achievement and school performance, it is a shared responsibility. We have a superintendent who is leading our district and who has held herself accountable, most recently with our superintendent evaluation, really tracking her own, like her progress based on the progress of our schools, and that is something that is trickling to our administrators and to our school teachers, and that is also a responsibility of families and of us as community members, and so we all have a role in this to play. It's also important for us to keep our eyes on the goals. We set academic goals in 2023 for our students, and those are academic goals that we need to continue tracking and that we are improving our measuring practices on as well. Those include sense of belonging, third grade reading attendance, ninth grade on track to graduation, and graduation rates, and I'm proud to say that I also led our school board and school district in implementing those clear academic goals in 2023 as chair.
We will now switch to my left and start with candidate, Zone Seven candidate Fuller. Your time begins now.
Thank you. So, you know, we need to start by making sure that our teachers and our students are feeling supported, validated, and safe. It seems that that means different things to different people, but our children will show up ready to learn when they want to be there, when they look forward to being there, when they have fun things that they can do, they have classes that engage them, and I think that teachers are really struggling in classes. How can we bridge the community to help the teachers more? How can we celebrate the good things that are happening? I apologize as well and recognize that one minute is a short time and not a lot of time to prepare. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Radka, your one minute begins now.
For me, my, I have, obviously, I have three kids. Each one is in a different grade level. I've got one in high school, one in middle school, one in grade school. Those achievements that they are able to do, I've watched them fail, I've watched them make midline, but are they actually prepared for a career? I've also noticed a reduction in respect for schools. I think that all starts at home. If a parent is not being, teaching their child to respect the environment that they're in for school, then that student is going to become more of a distraction at school because they're trying to reach out for some validation or attention. For the most part, for accountability, I think it goes both ways. I think teachers need to be held accountable as well as students. If the students aren't provided the environment in which.
Thank you, candidate Radka.
Thank you.
We will now come over to my right, beginning with Zone One Director Harnish. Your one minute begins now.
Student achievement and school performance is one of the major priorities that we have as a board. Our, holding accountability and progress towards the district goals is important for a board director. As a school board, we have selected five major goals that have been referenced already: literacy, attendance, four-year graduation, ninth grade on track, and a sense of belonging. It's our duty to look at and parse through data to really understand how we are or we are not, making progress towards those goals, and to work with the superintendent to identify pathways forward to help us achieve those, achieve those goals.
Thank you. Zone One candidate Mitchell, you are now up.
These goals are way too low. They are way too low. For example, we're talking about 1.7% to 1.8% gains in some of those categories that were mentioned. I think those are great things to focus on, though. I think the categories are correct, but we're talking about taking student literacy rates, we're talking about taking the literacy rate for third graders at a certain acceptance level from 25% to 27% instead of 90%, and I think that's a serious conversation we need to have about why the goal isn't 90%. In terms of accountability, I'll just say one last thing. Government works best at local levels, and the smaller the group, the better. I believe that accountability begins with the perspective that the student brings to school about their responsibility to themselves and to their families, and then from there, it goes to the teacher and their level of accountability and responsibility to their students and to their classroom. And if we can get most of our attention in those two areas, we'll have a lot of success. Thank you.
Thank you. Zone Three candidate Aradondo Baca, you are now up, sir.
Yeah, thank you. As some of my colleagues here up here have mentioned, the academic goals, I think those, we should continue to do those for accountability purposes. You know, if we're not following these goals, we've got to go back to the drawing table and say, why are we not? What should we change? So that is the accountability piece for me. I also think as, one of the goals is, is just having a sense of belonging. As I mentioned, that is where it starts. If a student doesn't feel like they belong in our schools, how can we expect them to be successful in a classroom? And so, making sure that they feel, you know, sense of belonging in our schools, I think, is a good, a really good first step, and also acknowledging that not all kids learn the same way. Some kids might need, you know, a dual-language program. Some might need, you know, extra help classroom without two teachers instead of one. So we shouldn't, you know, we should see this as not a one-size-fits-all issue. So, yeah, thank you.
And finally, Zone Three candidate Parker, please share your answers with our audience.
Yes, I echo every candidate's comments about their response about achievement and accountability. Accountability comes from all of us. It takes a village to raise a child. It comes from the parents, it comes from the teachers, community members, all of us, superintendents, everyone. It starts with the, starts with the parents getting their kids to school, then the teachers are teaching the students and working on their math and reading scores, all scores, make them feeling belonging, safe, well-rounded. We need to give all these children the tools that they need. Accountability comes from every single one of us, and that's how we get, that's how we get achievement, is working as a community together to help to raise a child. Yes, thank you.
Thank you all. You're a very timely group, and for that, I'm going to present you a present. Instead of 30-second closing comments, we are tracking well on schedule, which is wonderful. You will now each have one minute in concluding comments, which hopefully allows you to share a little bit more with our audience. We will begin our, start our closing statements with Zone Seven candidate Radka.
Oh, boy. Our schools should be places where kids are safe, where learning is real, and where communication with families is clear and honest. That's not too much to ask. It's the bare minimum, and it's what I'll fight for every single day. If you believe that in real skills, real standards, and real outcomes, I'd be honored to earn your vote, and you can look at my website, radkaforschools.com. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to candidate Fuller. Your one-minute closing statements begin now.
Thank you so much. What I hear, I'm running for school board because I want to protect what we have. Right now, I think our schools are just wonderful places to be in every day. I see it. I'm there. Test scores are low. I hear all that. That's very real, and I'm not excusing it or saying that it doesn't need to be met. However, I think that the way that I believe it can be met is different from some of the other people on this panel. I don't, I'm going to quote some Mary Poppins here in a minute. Tradition, discipline, and rules are not quite the way that my kids want to spend their days, and I don't think it's the way most kids want to spend their days. Schools are a happy place. It's where kids grow. It's where they make friends. It's where they learn how to navigate life. It's where they learn hard lessons. It's where they stumble and fall. It's where they learn to be successful. It's when they learn how to be better. And I think that our schools right now, with the exception of, it's not perfect, nothing ever is, but I'm a huge proponent of public schools and especially Salem Kaiser School District. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Fuller. We now turn to candidate Croker for one-minute concluding statements.
All right. Thank you very much, and yes, schools are a happy place, but they're also a place that could use some improvement, and that's why I'm here today. We all are business people here, and we know that as business people, if our customers are not liking our product, they're going to go elsewhere, and unfortunately, that's what's happening. Just as Andrea talked about, we're losing 500 to 700 students per year in Salem Kaiser Schools because parents are not happy with what they're getting. They're going to private schools, they're going to, you know, homeschools. So obviously, the parents are not impressed with the product that the school board is delivering, and so we need to make some improvements. We need a new perspective and a fresh set of eyes to make those improvements. I believe that I can be that new perspective and fresh set of eyes, because we're not just here to hand out diplomas to these kids. We need to set them up for a life of success. Thank you.
Zone Five Director Guzman Ortiz, please begin.
I stand, first of all, very strongly with public education. I am a graduate of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. This went going from kindergarten through 12th grade, and there is nothing that I'm more proud of. I had amazing educators in our schools who supported and guided me through that, even as a young parent at the age of 16. I know that our schools, our 38,000 students, including my two children, deserve the quality education that our schools can provide and do provide, and our educators deserve the support from our district to make sure that they can do their jobs well and show up every single day to do that important work. I have served now four years on the school board. I have learned a lot, and I have also taken that learning into action. I spoke about some of the difficult challenges, including a budget cuts, but also setting those foundations, that very strong foundation of academic measures so that we can continue tracking how our students are doing and so that we can know how to best support and respond to the learning needs of our students. I heard earlier, you know, our goal is 100%. Our goal is that our students graduate at 100% rates and that they learn that they're on track to read. I'm up for time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, you are up.
Hello. I'm not a politician. I've never done this before. I'm just this mom with an adult son who's, he went through the Salem Kaiser School Districts too, from kindergarten all the way to graduation, and I saw the struggles that he faced, and I felt for him, and I feel for all the kids, and I worked really hard to make it the best place, worked with his teachers, helped volunteers of the schools. And with my career, I work with individuals with disabilities. So I'm running just for common, to bring some common sense back into, common sense leadership. I'm a problem solver. I help, I'm a neighbor, I'm an employer in the community, have grounds, I have ties to this community, and I feel that I'm just running for safety for the students, student success, and working with the most vulnerable population because that is my experience that I have the most with the most vulnerable population. Thank you, and I hope for your support.
Zone Three candidate Aradondo Baca, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, as I mentioned, this is deeply personal for me. Above all my parents, my mom went to fifth grade, and then my dad never went to school, and so education was always the answer for them. You're going to, you know, your college. And so, because of the school board, I am able to do that, and I'm a couple of months, well, a month away from being the first in my family to have a college degree, and that is the opportunity that I want all of our kids to have in our school district, because of programs like AVID, because of programs like the free lunch program. I was able to just focus on education, getting those skills to be ready for the workforce, and I want those students to feel the same. As I mentioned, I am a guardian, my sister, I'm very proud of my sister. She's at Western Oregon. My sister is a junior, she wants to go to Chomecada, and so because of the skills that our schools are giving them, they're able to do that, and we're all able to have, hopefully, a higher-ed degree, and that is the opportunity that I want for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Zone One candidate Mitchell, please begin.
I dropped my three kids off this morning at elementary school, and I saw something wonderful. One of the folks that was running the traffic greeted each of my kids by their first name. That was so wonderful. Your first name matters to you as a human being, and it made me realize that we have so many good things happening in our schools, and nobody becomes a teacher if they don't care about students at some level. I come from a family of educators, and nobody signs up for such a hard job for so little pay if you don't love teaching or love children, and I want our schools to be better. I don't want parents to feel like they have to send their kids to private schools. I want Salem schools to be a place of excellence. When we talk about academic achievement and excellence, all we're talking about is doing a better job of measuring things that matter and holding teachers and students accountable. accountable to outcomes that are going to help them and those that they're around. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Anthony Mitchell. I'm now going to have candidate and director Lisa Harnish, please close us out.
I am passionate about our community. I am passionate about education, and the two of those really belong together. I will continue to work with colleagues on the school board to help ensure that we are measuring that success, also that we're recognizing that success. There is amazing work that is happening in our schools, and we should be so proud of what our kids can accomplish, what our teachers are doing and they are accomplishing. And we need to make sure that the broader community knows that and celebrate that. We also need to make sure that our students are ready for their next steps in their career, whether that be straight into the workforce or that be onto higher education. That is our job as an educational institution, and I am so proud to serve on the school board, and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
School board candidates, you now get to relax, enjoy a little lunch. You've completed your missional work today. Ladies and gentlemen, join me in thanking our school board candidates. Great job, everybody. And that will, of course, mean our city council candidates, you are up. The role of Salem City Council requires a significant investment of time in community building. This May, voters in Ward Six will be asked to select their next representative. The Ward Six council seat has been vacant since former councillor Julie Hoy's successful campaign for mayor, and their ward is ready to have a voice in city council chambers. There are three individuals seeking Ward Six elected office. Note that candidate Mai Vang is absent today as she is on her honeymoon. We are pleased to host Ward Six candidates Logan Lor and Deanna Garcia this afternoon. All three city council candidates completed our candidates questionnaire, so you can gain their perspective and Mai Vang's perspect, candidate Mai Vang's perspective, which is on your tables, and we'd encourage you to take a look. The same rules apply. Each candidate will have one minute of introductory statement and will have one minute of a closing statement. In between, we will tackle three questions in our Q and A period. Let's jump right in. Candidate Garcia, your introductory one-minute starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Deanna Garcia, and I'm a longtime resident of Northeast Salem, where I've raised my family and ran a small business. I've spent my career as a public servant, both as a professional and a volunteer capacity. I've been an advocate for Northeast Salem for almost two decades, and I currently serve as the chair for the North Lancaster Neighborhood Association. I understand the struggles that Northeast Salem faces, and I want to be a catalyst for change in Ward Six. My priorities are public safety, housing affordability, addressing homelessness, and budget accountability.
Thank you. Candidate Lor, your one-minute introductory statements begin now.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Logan Lor. I'm running for Salem City Council. I've lived in Salem for 39 years. I'm a husband, father of four, and I'm a blue collar worker. Now, the difference between me and the other two candidates is I'm not, I'm not endorsed by the major political parties. I haven't been taking any money from special interest group. Okay? That means I'm not obligated to political agendas or donors. I'm here to serve you, the city of Salem. I'm running because for too long, Northeast Salem, the most diverse part of Salem, has been underserved and overlooked. There's a, there's a clear social economic divide in our city, and it's time to fix it. Every neighborhood deserves equal investment and opportunity, and I ran out of time.
Thank you. Thank you both. Our first question is predictably about our city's budget. The question is, the city of Salem is facing a $13.8 million budget shortfall. Please explain your support or opposition to the city livability levy appearing on May 2025 ballots, and what city functions in the general fund would you prioritize should the levy be unsuccessful? Candidate Garcia, your one-minute starts now.
Well, I'm glad the cities put the livability levy to the voters. It's a big decision, and the public deserves a say in that. There is a big budget gap, and like other Salem residents, I'm weighing out my, my options, the value of the services against the impact on my property taxes. If the levy doesn't pass, I still want to make sure that public safety is fully funded. I feel like that's the most important part, especially for Northeast residents who definitely feel like there's a gap in the services that they receive.
Point of clarity, it is important that you answer the first part of my question. Are you in support or opposition to the city's livability levy?
I'm still weighing in on whether I'm going to support it.
Candidate Lor, your time begins now, sir.
So I'm in support of the Livability Act with, with special cautions on what we're gonna do. Are we just gonna kick the ball down, down five, five more year down the road, and then rethink of what we're gonna do? We need to really sit down and really think, go through this budget and really be more accountable and be more specific on where we're spending our funds. As far as cutting the budget, if this doesn't, this levy doesn't pass, Northeast Salem have a surge of 65% crimes of homicides and shooting. Okay? We have 65% of the apartment in Salem that are in the Northeast Salem. That's where the crimes are happening. We need strong police departments and police presence in Northeast.
Thank you both. The Salem Chamber believes deeply that the city needs to provide two very key important elements, public safety and strong infrastructure. Our second inquiry pertains to public safety. As recently reported in the Statesman Journal, of the eight largest cities in Oregon, Salem's police-to-resident population ratio is the lowest. With 65% of all homicides and non-fatal shootings occurring within five square miles in Northeast Salem, covering parts of Ward Six, what actions would you take as a councillor to address this growing violence issue? Councillor Lor, we will begin our one-minute answer period with you.
All right. So first, we need to, to start with the harmful policies that's been passed to, to, to the city. A policy of socioeconomic segregation that we have, okay? The Northeast Salem is 65%, holds 65% of the city's apartment complex. Why is that? Why isn't the South hold 30%, 40%? Why isn't the West hold 30%, 40%? That is a disproportionate service in Salem that we need to fix. The other thing that we need to fix is, we need to make sure that kids in Northeast Salem has mentorship programs, after-school programs for kids, so they don't get it too much, they don't have too much slack times to, to go out and cause trouble. We see gangs issue, we have, we see taggings on our properties in the Northeast Salem. And that's where our neighborhood association, that's where the police departments come together to figure out what's going on, how to be tackled this issue.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia, we turn the floor over to you.
So last year, they started doing the Community Violence Reduction Initiative, and I sat in on several of those meetings. And some of the thought processes that came out of that is engaging the community more and empowering them to have trust within the public safety departments. That's really important. In some of my canvassing, I've noticed a lot of people say the same thing. I call the police and they never come. And trying to build up that trust and confidence in people to know that there is law enforcement available and to keep making the calls and just understanding that the, the data proves a lot. There is a lot of crime in Northeast Salem, but the response times start to waver if people don't make those calls and let law enforcement know that something's going on. So just empowering the community, getting them more engaged for a lot of reasons, not just making the calls, but also getting services and activities for the youth to keep them out of trouble. Yeah.
Thank you. Our final question ponders two areas of distinct priority, housing stock and economic development. As city councillor, what new perspective would you present to Salem City Council to increase housing supply across the city and also promote economic development within Salem? Candidate Garcia, we will begin with you.
Will you repeat the question?
As city councillor, what new perspective would you present to Salem City Council to increase housing supply across the entire city and promote economic development in Salem?
Well, I don't know if this is really a, a new idea, but I know there's been some legislation passed for middle housing development, and I sat at the city council work session about housing production strategy. So I know there's a need to bring more housing units online and, of course, making them affordable so that people have the ability to fulfill the dream of homeownership. That's always a great feature of developing housing. And the more housing units that are available, that's gonna bring a population here that needs employment. So that'll draw in businesses and employers to come to our community and sustain our infrastructure.
Candidate Lor, please share your thoughts.
So what we need to do, just increase what we have going downtown Salem. The, the housing, I forgot what exactly the proper technical political term is, for the, for the apartment complex in Salem. We need to increase that in Northeast Salem. We, we already seen that being established at the mushroom plant right next to my neighborhood there. Okay? We got single housing, we got double and triple, triplexes, we got apartment complex all in the mix. We can do that in Salem. We can increase housing for the, for our growing population. But we need to do it mindful. We need to do it carefully throughout Salem. Offer everybody an opportunity to grow their family in South Salem, West Salem, instead of just the Northeast Salem. That's what our problem is. We're concentrating so much investment on Northeast Salem that it's, that is stagnant Northeast Salem population from growing. People in Northeast Salem who, who wants to take their kid to South Salem can't.
Thank you, candidate Lor. We will wrap up our Salem City Council Ward Six candidates discussion with closing remarks. Similar to earlier, I would encourage you to utilize your time to share with the audience why you are the best choice to represent Salomites as Ward Six city councillor. Candidate Lor, we will begin your, the one-minute with you.
So thank you for inviting me here. Thank you for coming to this community forum, which you are a very important part of this community. Again, I lived here in Salem for 39 years, raised a family here. I worked for, for Department Correction. I've been in Department Correction for 27 years. I'm not backed up, I'm not backed by major political groups. I'm not backed, I haven't taken money from any special interest group. So I'm here as your representative for fair representation, equal voice for the Northeast Salem. I'll fight for the neighborhoods in Northeast Salem. I look forward to, to your, your inputs, look forward to meeting you, talking to you about what experience you have in Northeast Salem that concerns you or that you'd like to see change. And together, I think we can make Salem a better place to live.
Thank you. Candidate Garcia, please provide us your closing thoughts.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here today. Northeast Salem needs a councillor who has a proven track record of making things happen. That's me. A voice for the population, many of whom are vulnerable or economically disadvantaged, I'm ready to take my years of advocacy to the next level. I've gained support from friends, family, neighbors, police, firefighters, and business leaders who heard my vision and wanted to back me. A better place to live can happen if you share in my vision, and if you feel compelled, share my name within your networks to help elect me to be the voice for Ward Six. Thank you.
I wish to thank our Ward Six city council candidates. If you would, please log into SalemChamber.org, where you can view our candidates questionnaire, in which all three city council candidates participated. You have undoubtedly noticed a number of campaign flyers. I picked this up off my seat. Looks like each and everyone brought their materials for you to view. Please, we encourage you to take those with you, as well as a flyer from our friends at Ameritidal, and take them back to the office and share with your cohorts, friends, and family. Let's go into our closing business, and thank you all for helping us stay right on time today. It's pretty impressive. Would you join me in thanking our two Salem City Council candidates? Our members depart today with a greater knowledge on the choices that they have in front of them. The Salem business community again shares our collective gratitude for your willingness to step forward and run for public office. We wish to recognize and thank Ellen Yin from Cubicle, CEO, for presenting today's anthem. As she wraps up her service as Mrs. Oregon, Ellen, you're a terrific representative for We wish to recognize our partners at Allied Video Productions, Capital Community Media, and the Salem Convention Center, who each showcase their talents in this wonderful atmosphere each month at our Forum Chamber Speaker Series luncheons. To our Salem Chamber ambassadors, you see them in their navy vests or their sport coats, we thank you for your work in welcoming people into this organization and making them feel right at home. Your hospitality is top-notch. Ameritidal, the team at Ameritidal, thank you for your strategic support of the Salem Chamber in sponsoring today's forum luncheon and your years of support of our organization. And Director Templeton will be exiting our board after six years of service, and I can say he has been nothing but absolutely outstanding for this community and our organization. Thank you, Eric, for your work. Thank you also to our Forum Speakers Series season-long sponsors at Haggen-Hamilton Insurance Solutions. You guys do a tremendous job, and we appreciate seeing you each and every month. Now, Chamber Businesswomen will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, April 15th, from 11:45 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I am told there are four tickets left. So you want to hop on SalemChamber.org, just click our calendar section, and you can click the event right off there to get registered. Our keynote will be by Saleah Johnson, a Leadership and Transitions coach. Her keynote is entitled Emotional Intelligence: Key Elements of Understanding. Again, SalemChamber.org is your pathway to tickets. On May 12th, we are extremely pleased to bring you our next Forum Speaker Series event, and we're jumping into a great one. We will be bringing in a speaker to talk about the new landscape in Washington, D.C. under the Trump administration. That's right, we're bringing in the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, Chris Eiler, who is Vice President in Congressional and Public Affairs at the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. Speaker Eilers will share a candid look into the impacts of the Trump administration and what it's had on the U.S. business economy across the Pacific Northwest, the nation, and internationally. We are honored to welcome insider Chris Eiler back to Oregon for this premier speaking engagement. You'll want to hop on and get tickets for the May 12th event very soon. We wish for you to mark your calendars for our annual Business of the Year Awards Luncheon, which will occur Monday, June 9th, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. A little bit longer in length, we have a little more business to go through. This annual celebration is made possible due to our partners at Willamette Valley Bank and is highlighted by a recognition of not just our Business, Businesses of the Year, but also our Leadership Salem cohort graduation. You do not want to miss out on this event. Tickets are only $20 per person. Tom, why would you guys only charge $20? You're paying way more than that to be in this room with everything that goes into that. You are correct. This is an investment by our Board of Directors to say, what is the average cost of a lunch in downtown Salem or somewhere in our city on that Monday? Come spend it here, including a tip, $20 all-in. Bring your teammates and friends for certainly an uplifting event. Bring your teammates and friends for certainly an uplifting event on June 9th. Nominations for Businesses of the Year are open now through next Friday, so please take a moment and recognize a peer business that you know deserves great recognition. The Salem Chamber has released our endorsement statements for the Chremecata Community College Bond, as well as the City of Salem Livability Levy. Dr. Jessica Howard is here today, along with Holly. I see our organization stands behind the Chremecata Community College Bond, and I am happy to field your questions as a member as to why our organization believes in the future workforce and the work that Chremecata does in crafting them. Second of all, and certainly a bit more talked about potentially, is the Salem Chamber's endorsement of the City Livability Levy. I have the opportunity, along with Dr. Irvin Brown and City of Salem CFO Josh Eggleston, tomorrow night to be on a panel hosted by Les Yates and the Salem Reporter. That occurs at Elsinore Theater from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Tickets are free, but they would request that you pre-register SalemReporter.com. Les, did I miss anything there? Okay. Awesome deal. We close with giving away our flower centerpiece. And Mike's delivering it to me. Usually, we do in the envelope, please. Fantastic. Lori Miller with the Equitable Center, you will be taking home these beautiful flowers, courtesy of our partners at Ross Fresh Markets. We appreciate Ross and their contributions to each and every forum luncheon. With that, ladies and gentlemen, you walk out more educated and understanding where you need to be considering your votes. On behalf of the Salem Chamber, we appreciate your time today and can't wait to see you next month for a deep look into the new administration in Washington, D.C. Have a great afternoon. Thank you all for your work. We're going to get a great, big group photo, so don't run off. Mike?